All right. Okay, at this time, I would like to call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Taft Planning Commission. Today is Wednesday, June 3rd. We are meeting in City Hall Council Chambers at 209 East Kern Street, Taft, California. Pursuant to the Governor's Executive Order N-29-20, Taft Planning Commission meetings will be held in the following manner. One, in order to protect our constituents, city officials and staff, all public meetings until further notice, will be held closed to the public. Planning Commission meetings will be live streamed in real time to our YouTube channel by searching for City of Taft Clerk, oh, City of Taft City Clerk, on your YouTube or at this link, HTTPS colon double backslash WWW dot YOUTUBE dot com dot user, or excuse me, forward slash user, forward slash City of Taft. Public comments for the Planning Commission meetings will be accepted in the following manner. Public comments will be accepted up until 3:00 PM on the day of the meeting. Written comments may be dropped off in the Dropbox in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to the City Clerk at YMayfield@CityOfTaft.org, made by phone calls to the City Clerk's office at 661-763-1222. The comments received will be read into the record. Should a member of the public prefer to speak during the live portion of the meetings, shall contact the City Clerk prior to the time listed above and provide a contact phone number. Be available during the meeting times of 4:00 PM to 5:00 PM. Will be contacted at the phone number provided and placed on speaker to address the commission during the meeting. At this time, the regularly scheduled meeting is called to order. Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance. Salute and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
We have no one for invocations now? Anybody volunteer? I'll do it. Heavenly Father, we've become, we've come before you to ask your guidance in the matters presented to us. At the same time, we request your hand of mercy over our city and our state and our nation. We ask that you prevail and your will be done at this time in our country. We pray for those who have lost loved ones, who are being damaged by the civil unrest, and we thank you for the peace that we're enjoying here in Taft. We say these things and ask these things in your son's name. Amen. Okay, roll call.
And commissioners, just to remind you to be close to your mics since we're being recorded for this meetings.
Chairman Orrin?
Here.
Vice Chair Livingston?
Here.
Commissioner Banner is absent. Commissioner Laicham?
Here.
And Commissioner Miller is absent.
Item one is citizens' requests, public comments. This is the time and place for the general public to address the commission on matters within its jurisdiction. State law prohibits the commission from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. Commission may receive comment and set the matter for a subsequent meeting. Please limit comments to five minutes. No speakers at this time? Okay, thank you. That concludes item one. We're on item two, which is the approval of minutes for the May 16th, May 6th, excuse me, 2020 regular meeting.
A motion to approve minutes as submitted for May 6th, 2020.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It carries on a three zero. Moves us to item number three. Continued public hearing, conditional use permit number 2019-14. This is, at this time, we're officially reopening the public hearing. And I have a note here.
Chairman Orrin, if you don't mind, I'll give a real brief presentation to update you what's new in your staff report packet from the last meeting we had on this item.
Okay.
So, as you mentioned, this is a conditional use permit, 2019-12, for a 75-foot telecommunications tower for cell service. The design is of a, is a stealth design as a water tower, and the commissioners discussed the different design aspects of the water tower and whether you may want to consider a different stealth design similar to some of the tree projects we've approved in the past. So, what you have before you, if you have the color drawings and the full-size black line drawings, there is a, some slight changes to the water tower design. The barrel at the top of it, the diameter has been reduced from 26 down to 20 feet. So, that means the number of antennas on the interior have been reduced from 12 to nine. It still provides the cell service, but the barrel was a little bit broader before, but now it has a little more narrow profile to it. And also in the color drawings, you do have the pine and palm view. They're not on the stapled copies, they're the single images looking from across Kern Street towards Fast Trip with the trees in the background. So, those were requests made by the commission. The only other revision is there is a new condition of approval. It was requested by our Public Works and City Engineer that they will need to provide an additional three feet of road dedication along 10th Street. We do have a, well, one, it's a development project where you could condition that, but we do have a future 10th Street project coming through. And right now, the half width is 42 feet and the City Engineer needs 45. So, it's just an additional three feet of right-of-way. And that's Public Works Condition Number Six on page three of the attached resolution. So, those are the only revisions that are before you. And as you mentioned, the public hearing is reopened, but I can take any questions you have, may have for me. And then after that, we do have the applicant. His name is Mitchell, he's on the phone. He can answer questions about the technical aspects of the project. And then we also have Doug Jones, who represents the property owner. And what you, I believe, one of the drawings is up with two of the commissioners. It's an original watercolor drawing that Mr. Jones provided, and he can go into detail about some of the extras that could be placed on the property, which, as you see in the drawing, is a hand cart. So, let's begin with any questions you may have for me, and then we can perhaps move on to hearing from Mitchell and Doug. Any other questions?
This may sound a little lame, but it is to scale, correct?
The, now, the original watercolor, that is from late last year when I think they were still in some earlier design phases.
Okay.
So, one thing I will mention is the legs of the water tower are more vertical. They do not angle in to the barrel. They're straight underneath it. And the barrel does have, you'll see in the other renderings, there's more of a platform base to the barrel.
Yeah.
So, those are two of the revisions to the design since that.
So, this one is more accurate?
Correct.
Then, okay.
The color one gives you more of the overall look, but also shows the hand cart monument out along the street that Mr. Jones has been working on to place on the property.
That's a little section of North Street by the car wash.
Yes, this is the northeast corner of 10th and North Streets. There is a short segment remaining from when the senior apartment housing was developed because North used to go through. So, there's a short segment there that connects to 10th. And the, I did mention it last time, is part of the project, but their access driveway for their once-a-year maintenance is going to be a driveway off of North. There will be no driveways off of 10th, just to avoid any having too many cuts between the gas station, the car wash, and Fast Trip. So, the driveway for access for that and even future projects will be off of North to help with any conflicts.
So, if we had a, I don't know, a mini mark or something like that put in there, they would come in through North Street?
Correct.
And then on to the property?
Yes.
So, to clarify more, when we're looking at these drawings, each of these pine tree, the palm tree, and the water tank designs are all at 75 feet maximum height in scale?
So, that's where, that's probably a question for the applicant since they put the drawing together. But that is what is expected of those drawings, yes. So, if you want, you can ask those questions of, Mitchell can answer the specific questions about the drawings and the imagery, and Doug is representing the property owner.
Any other questions or comments you'd like to make before we get them on the phone?
No, not, not between us, no.
Jerry?
No, not just mine.
Okay, so I think to keep this in order, Mitchell, if there's anything you would like to add based on what you've heard so far from the commissioners, let's start with you.
It was a little hard to, sorry. Yeah, this is Mitchell Bryant. Thank you, everybody. Of course, I, but it was a little bit hard to hear them. I think what I heard was some questioning of the photosimulations, if they were all equal in height to represent 75-foot height for the pine, the palm, and the water tank, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, yeah, that's, absolutely. That's, we wanted to make sure we were comparing, you know, apples to apples, if you will. So, yeah, they were all rendered at the same height. But you did mention to them that we did reduce the overall size of the water tanks until last time, right?
Yes, the diameter is down from 26 feet down to 20 feet, correct?
You did mention. Yeah.
Does that drawing represent a 20-foot diameter? But the DraftLink, the provision from DraftLink, that is a 20-foot cylinder diameter?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, everything should be to scale.
We need you to speak in your microphone.
I'm sorry.
I have a question about the graphics. Are we limited to any color on the graphics? Does it have to be simply black printed lettering? Or can we do a, like the Taft logo design on there? Are you open to, you know, different ideas for the graphics on the water tower?
Did you hear that, Mitchell and Doug?
I think, was the question regarding the lettering and maybe the coloring?
Yes, if there are options for other graphics in addition to or replacement of what is shown right now on the drawings.
Yeah, I don't see, foresee, as long as, you know, it always comes down to how much things cost. So, something like that doesn't seem like it would cost that much to just make some subtle changes to the coloring and whatnot. So, I don't foresee any issues with that. We would just have, I don't know who makes that decision. We wouldn't want it to hold up like the process, meaning like have to come back to another hearing for something that's aesthetic, if you will. So, I don't know who approves those or who reviews those.
We don't have anything in our code that would specify that. I don't know how amenable your, whoever would have ultimate responsibility over the facility in the end, if there's any, you know, delay or longer design review, or they would be open to something coming in later as a final design?
Yeah, I don't see why not. I think we just need this clear, clear direction and, you know, that, so that we can put something together. Because obviously, every time we have to go back and do another rendering, we have to, you know, hire not only our architect that does the drawings to revise them, and that costs money. And then we have to hire the SIMS company and photosim people to revise the simulations, and then we got to get everything printed and resend it to you. So, you know, I just hope that doesn't hold us back. So, I guess maybe, I don't know how that.
So, I think the question would be amongst you is, is the form of the water tower in this revision something you are accepting in that all that's needed later, however much later beyond this meeting, to have a design submitted later, whether it's our city seal, city logo, the Rails and Trails that's proposed? Are you okay with the basics of the structure right now?
I have a question. Is one of the structures of the three designs, is one of them more beneficial to them?
Did you catch that, Mitchell?
No, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear it.
So, that was our chairman. He was asking if any one of the three designs was more beneficial than the other.
To them?
In my eyes, and I think looking at it from a planning perspective, where, okay, how does it add to the area as well as working with Doug and the monument? I feel like that fits the best. Honestly, from a AT&amp;T perspective, the most expensive thing to do, which obviously, they don't want to go out and spend tons of money to build these things, is the water tank. So, this is a really, you know, the, they're putting their best foot forward for the city and for the landlord. If it was up to them, they would just want to do a tree because those are typically, cost a lot less and we can put them up so quickly.
Originally, I was opposed to the water tower, but after talking to some of the people here in Taft and some friends and neighbors, I actually liked the water tower. And one of the things I was going to suggest before coming to the meeting was if it could be scaled down somewhat. But I think you've done that here with the latest images. My only question then would simply be, are we, you know, are we prohibited to just lettering or to also images on there? So, I, you know, that wouldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't stop me either way. I actually like the idea of the water tower now.
Okay, I think one option with that as far as a process for accepting a design, and this is up to you if you want to go this direction with it, we do have our Economic Development Ad-Hoc Committee, which has a diverse board of people between commission, council, and the public, including our chamber director. So, I don't know if you would want to assign working with the applicant post-approval of this to get a agreeable design on there?
That would be a good place for the board, for that board to take a look at that, yes.
You know, if it's not going to actually affect the, anything other than the aesthetics of the sign, I think these guys should have the, they've already delayed once. They should have the opportunity to move forward on the technical construction-related things, but give us an opportunity at the Ad-Hoc Committee to review and give some advice on the image. That would be fine.
And then also, if you would like, as I mentioned, Doug Jones, who represents the property owner, if you want to hear from him, he can explain to you the bigger idea that the property owner has for the site, which includes the hand cart drawing, which I'll try to hold up for the camera.
Now, for the hand cart, is that something that we would have to provide? Or is that something that you already have? Or is it just a copy?
Well, this is for them, and that's where I wanted to have Doug give you the explanation of the process he went through to come to this. He's tried to work with our museum to work something out. So, if you want, he can speak for a couple of minutes to.
One of the things I would say to the hand cart is I absolutely am opposed to the city requiring it.
Okay.
But if they want to contribute that and place that on their property, I'm not hindered by its appearance. But I am really opposed to us requiring them to do some sort of art form in their property.
Okay, so Doug, I don't know if you caught that from our chairman?
Yeah, from what I hear, it's kind of hard for me to, yeah, from what I understand is that they don't want it to hinder the future development of the property. Is that what, is that what the statement was?
No, actually, they don't want us to put a specific condition requiring the hand cart, but they do welcome the effort that you've been making so far to provide that hand cart monument there. And if you want, you could take a couple of minutes to explain what you've been doing the past couple of months trying to get that hand cart or do something with our West Kern Oil Museum in bringing some historical touch to this property and project.
Well, when I started on this project for Mr. Burke, I spoke to the, I spoke to Mark, and Mark said, you know, you might want to talk to the mayor or to David, Dave Nor. And it was Dave's idea. He says, you know, a water tank is good because it's tied into the rail system and, or to the rail type of environment. And, you know, a hand cart or something like that on the property might, you know, aid in becoming a landmark or at least reflect the history of that neighborhood 100 years ago. And that's why we suggested we put a hand cart right there on the corner on a, you know, 16-inch concrete foundation.
I think that what the hand cart represents to me is a bit of a theme that's leading to the Rails to Trails. We have a monument sign or a welcome to Taft sign, three locations. And I don't want to have it be redundant. I kind of like the Rails to Trails thing. The other thing I, can you refresh me on how tall the actual tank is? Isn't it like 42 feet?
I believe that might have shrunk just a little bit with the diameter shrinking as well. Please forgive me for going through this process of looking through drawings. Okay, so it is now around 30, 32 feet.
I think it was 42 before, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, closer to 40 feet before it is.
So, it's been scaled back, and it makes sense to me. Do you have any other discussion? I'm kind of, I'm not tired of the palm tree, pine tree thing. But I see this is pretty unique and, you know, being scaled back the way it is, I'm not, I was opposed to the mass, not the concept.
I remember you bringing that up last night.
Yeah.
In my case, it's the same thing. I was not sure that I wanted to see something that big.
Right.
Roaming over things. But to me, it looks like it's much better fit. And to be honest with you, I like the, I mean, if they want to put in the hand cart, I'm with the chairman. I don't think the city should be ever requiring a piece of art to be put someplace. But if somebody wants to do that as part of their project to make it unique, I love that. It certainly makes me.
It's not, it would be a good idea if we, they can also use it as a monument sign for the rest of the development in some way. So, we don't have some cluster out there of conflicting messages. So, it's kind of one message. I don't know what Mr. Burke has planned for the rest of the property, but if that isn't a hindrance to him, I like the card idea also.
And even though it's not necessarily part of the project now, Doug, I don't know if you wanted to add some of the things you've told me about future development of the site or what your idea was for, similar to what the chairman just mentioned in that you have this water tower, the hand cart, and a theme that you're trying to develop for eventual development of the property?
Yeah, I think that the hand cart lends itself to, it becomes a landmark property, and I think that lends itself to easier, it just becomes more attractive to a retail outlet, retail somebody that is going to want to land there. It gives a land significance, and I think that it would be easier to attract a fast food, you know, AT&amp;T, Mark mentioned, was interested in their district, in a retail store there. I just think it makes it more attractive.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you. All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, is there any further questions for Doug?
Oh, I'm sorry, what?
They're still deliberating, Doug.
I like it as presented.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think the only issue to me is what's going to go up as a sign on the, on the actual tank. Other than that, the reduced size and scale makes it fit more with, I think, the area. And I do think it's unique, and I think something unique is nice along that entranceway.
Okay, so Mitchell, it sounds like the commission is providing direction that post-approval today, that will just work on a design that would be applied on the barrel. So, it doesn't necessarily need to be a full graphics exercise other than what the print will be, I'm assuming, facing west.
Where we are is.
Right. I was thinking, if I may, sorry, didn't mean to interrupt. But, because I have to still submit for plan check, and so, for the building safety. So, as long as it doesn't hinder us or hold us up with, as far as the planning process, and, you know, I guess I can submit something visually to you first, and whoever you have to have review it or look at it, and I can, maybe I can just have those changes on the elevation pages.
Yes, what we can do is, if you're going to remain in contact for working through that, we do have a committee that's a broad-based Economic Development Committee. And I think getting the imagery right on the barrel is a task that they would like to take on. And two of our commissioners sit on that committee, and we could definitely do a similar call-in to save you the travel to work through a quick design process to get a final graphic to place on the barrel.
Agreed.
Now, does the graphic have to go?
How often does that group meet? I'm just trying to think of the timeline.
It does not have a structured meeting time, so we can move as fast as needed, so, like you said, it doesn't hold up the plan check.
Okay, okay, I just want to be able to.
And we have another question from Mr. Laicham.
Would the graphic have to be applied before the barrel goes up? Or once the structure is up, can the graphic be applied at that time?
Did you catch that, Mitchell?
I think you said before or after the actual structure is up?
Well, I think how you assemble. Oh, I think, uh, how you assemble the, uh, um, water tower structure, would the graphic have to be on those panels before they go up, or could the design be applied after the completed structure's up?
Well, my common sense tells me that I, we would wanna have it all approved and predetermined before we start. Uh, I just think the administering that later down the road sounds kind of like, uh, kinda difficult for a huge company like AT&T to, um, to, I guess, organize.
Well, then we'd have to...
I think the, uh, reverse question now would be, um, what do you think the, um, number of months would be between, um, today and when you think you would be, uh, breaking ground for, uh, the project?
Uh, well, the plastic process usually takes about forty-five days, maybe less, um, and I imagine that they would probably start within a couple of months from there. They would just have to do their, their bid walk and construction walk, and then order the, uh, materials, so.
So, a month and a half to three months on plan check, another two to three months before a shovel's actually put in the ground? So, four to six?
Yeah, so that's six months, yeah.
Oh, we could have it, we could have it...
So groundbreaking by the end of the year.
So groundbreaking by the end of the year?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think within two meetings, we could have it figured out.
Yes, uh, with the remote, um, situation we're still in, um, that should make things easier, easier for people to attend, so.
We're, okay, so let me clarify, we're, we, the three of us that are present are approving this as a water tower design.
I'm in favor of doing it, as, as submitted...
Okay, so we, we have at least two out of three, and I agree.
Yeah.
So the three of us agree on that. The question is, shouldn't he be allowed to proceed full speed ahead at this time? Only waiting for the graphic from your committee, and it doesn't have to come back to us, so he can just
That is correct.
knock it out as quickly as possible?
Yes.
That, tha- that's what we're saying?
Yes.
Good, okay, I'm with that.
Okay, so with that, if, uh, the three of you are feeling comfortable, you could close the public hearing, and then we'll entertain a motion.
Okay, at this time, the public hearing is closed, we're looking for a motion to approve, oh, just a second, I have to read all that numbers. Where'd it go? Just a moment. Okay. So we're agreeing to the conditional use permit number two zero one nine dash one four?
It's, uh, one-two, just as a correction.
Okay.
It's on the, uh, resolution.
Great, so two zero one nine dash one-two.
Correct.
Okay. I can make that motion, correct?
Uh, just a matter of order, it's preferred not to.
It's, it's preferred not to, but there's no rule of succession.
Okay.
Correct.
I can do it. Well, now, before we get to that, uh, we, you've already closed the public hearing, but, uh, the question, this is for you, for you, Jason. Um, do we need to say anything about the design in the motion? And it's going to ad hoc.
Direction given?
Direction given?
Yeah, it's at the end of it.
Okay, um, in that case, a motion to adopt the resolution entitled the Resolution to the Planning Commission of the City of Taft approving conditional use permit number twenty nineteen twelve to construct a seventy-five-foot stealth water tower wireless communications facility within a nine-hundred-and-sixty-one-square-foot lease area on a three-quarter acre lot within the downtown commercial DC zone, district located at the northeast corner of Tenth Street and North Street. Um, and proceed with direction given regarding, uh, the graphics.
I'll second that.
Moves in seconded, roll call?
Commissioner Lykem?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller is absent, Commissioner Banner is absent, Vice Chair Livingston?
Yes.
And Chairman Orrin?
Yes, it carries on to three with, uh, two absent.
Uh, thank you, Mitchell and Doug, I will follow up with both of you tomorrow morning.
Nice, nice design guy. We appreciate you working this out.
Yeah, nice design.
It is unique, and I like it too.
That's, yeah, yeah.
Okay, I have a quick question.
Yes.
Is Doug the real, the Realtor in the transaction or the real estate agent in the action?
He has a background in, uh, um, consulting to get permits for landowners and things like that. So he is essentially truly representing the property owner, uh, helping get this project moved forward. He did a lot of the, uh, due diligence last year, um, and speaking with me as he was referencing when he spoke. And then Mitchell is with the company that's branded on all the plans, and actually getting the structure built. So that's why we'll be dealing with him, um, later with the graphics that you mentioned.
Yeah, 'cause it's construction.
Well, if that was an easy operation for them, I'd like them to spread the word. It's easy to work here.
Do we know where Doug Jones is from, just out of curiosity?
Uh, more Southern California, LA, to Palm Springs-ish area.
That's where their operations?
No, uh, Mr. Jones, um, I, I think he's, uh, in, um, full consulting mode, his full-time working period is coming on, so, uh, that's a bad way to put it, but it, he knows his stuff.
Politician doesn't wanna run for office. Okay, that concludes, uh, item three, we're onto item four, public hearing. Time extension, uh, number two zero two zero dash zero three. Like to open the public meeting at this time, uh, on this item. Uh, Mr. Staples, you have a recommendation for us?
Uh, yes, thank you, Chairman Orrin, and I'm gonna begin with, uh, Greg, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Uh, to keep this, uh, straightforward, this is an application to extend the approval period for the Jack in the Box project you approved a year ago. Um, that was resolution number two zero one nine dash zero three. Um, per our zoning code, when you approve these site plans and conditional use permits, they get a twelve-month approval period to move forward on the, uh, uh, project. And typically, that's done with the application of a building plan check. And when we get to, uh, Greg speaking, he can explain to you where he's at in the process. He's with the architecture firm that is, uh, preparing the construction drawings for it. And, uh, um, they weren't able to submit before, um, earlier in May, which was the, uh, twelve-month expiration date. But he was able to get the application into me to get another twelve-month, uh, approval period extension, um, uh, which is what you're acting on today. Nothing changes with the project, nothing changes with the original conditions of approval. The resolution you're adopting today just gives that additional twelve months to resolution twenty nineteen dash oh-three, um, giving a new approval deadline to the project of next May, twenty twenty-one. So that, I'll, I'll leave that with my presentation, and I'll take any questions you may have. And then, if you have questions for the project architect, he's on the line to speak as well.
Bob?
No, I'm okay with the extension.
Yeah, I'm good with the extension, I, I, I mean, this has not been the typical twelve-month timeframe.
Yeah.
You know, this is, so, a few rough spots for everybody, let's, I'd have to assume it's okay.
So I have, uh, Greg Borshardt on the, uh, line, um, if you want, he can say a few words of, uh, where he is with the project.
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious to hear how the progress is from his standpoint.
Okay, Greg, I don't know if you could hear, uh, the commissioners?
Yeah, yeah, I think I did, um, hello, everyone, uh, thanks, thanks for the time. Um, yeah, we were originally scheduled to have this, this project submitted to Building, um, about two months ago, and we had a couple of issues with Civil finishing their drawing, so, excuse me, they were actually scheduled to have their drawings completed, and we were planning on submitting to Building last week, and they have a few more issues. So we are looking to, to formally submit either in the next two weeks, or, um, the end of June at the absolute latest. So, um, this isn't gonna be a, you know, we're not gonna wait, you know, not, or nine, ten, eleven months to, to try and resubmit. It's gonna be fairly quickly in the next few weeks.
And then Greg, I, if I recall, in twenty nineteen, when I checked in with you, there was also an initial, I guess, interior design change? 'Cause there is a new, uh, um, uh, prototype, uh, that Jack in the Box is using that's only been in effect for about two years or so, right?
Correct, yeah, like, uh, twice a month, I believe, they come out with, they call it plan maintenance, so they update their, their interior finishes, and their kitchen layouts, and, and things like that. So, we were waiting for the, for the latest one to come out before we began, you know, putting the drawing set together. So, that was the original, um, delay. And, and since then, it's basically been, you know, everybody kinda knows what's going on, so.
Yeah, with everything being delayed with COVID.
Yeah, exactly.
All right.
And, uh, for the clerk, we haven't received any comments on, uh, this project either.
Okay, well, the comments, I think each of us has probably, probably received comments. You know, when's this gonna start, what happened to Jack in the Box, you know, I want my two tacos, that kinda stuff, so.
I'm looking for my mini tacos.
All right, so, um, what we need then is a motion to grant the extension, uh, for the twelve...
Did we open the public hearing?
Yes.
He did.
Yeah, we had opened.
Officially closed.
Okay, we are, uh, the public hearing is officially closed, and we now are looking for a resolution.
A motion?
Motion for the resolution.
It's you or me, Bob?
Uh, motion to the Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Taft approving the time extension, uh, uh, requested, number two zero two zero dash zero three, to extend the adoption of resolution number two zero one nine dash zero three, and approval of site plan review, number two zero nine dash zero three, and conditional use permit, number two zero nine dash zero four, to construct a twenty-seven, thirty-nine-square-foot Jack in the Box restaurant with a drive-through lane and open twenty-four hours on a point-five-five acre parcel located in the general commercial zone district on the north side of Kern Street, uh, west of Tenth Street, for an additional twelve months to May eighth, twenty twenty-one.
I second that.
Moved in seconded, on a roll call?
Commissioner Lykem?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller is absent, Commissioner Banner is absent, Vice Chair Livingston?
Yes.
And Chairman Orrin?
Yes, it carries on to three zero with two absent.
Thank you, Greg, and I'll follow up with you tomorrow morning as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mark, thanks, Earl.
All right, moves us on to item five. Mark?
Uh, thank you, Chairman Orrin, I have two items for you, especially since, um, uh, Commissioner Miller is not here. Uh, Mayor Nor mentioned last night at the city council meeting that, um, there will be a Fourth of July fireworks show in the Taft area. Most likely, it is gonna be out in the Franklin Field area, um, so it's more county land. So, um, the special event permits and, uh, encroachment permits that we would normally process, 'cause it was at Rosa Trails and closing down Sixth Street and Launch Area and all that stuff, is now on the county side of things. Uh, but we'll be working with them to, um, uh, figure out what we could do on our part, 'cause our city border goes right up to that area as well, so traffic control and things like that. Um, I do not anticipate any, um, activities like there typically was at the, uh, trail, being out in that area. Uh, but parking and spreading out and kinda, um, tailgating it, if you will, uh, will probably be the solution if you're wanting to be close. So, uh, keep an ear out when the chamber makes that announcement of where things are and all that. So, um, they've been talking to us, um, talking to Mayor Nor. Listened to him the past couple of years, he's, uh, very supportive of the Fourth of July event, uh, both as a mayor and personally. So, um, um, he spoke on that last night, so, um, keep an ear out for the details on that. That's the chamber's, uh, um, event, and since it's not on Rosa Trails, you won't see anything come through our approval process. And then the second item, which, uh, just came up, I don't have anything to say on it one way or the other, just, we are aware of the, um, peaceful protest that's planned for Saturday evening. The police, uh, department is very aware of it as well, they have posted on it, so, uh, uh, monitor their Facebook page uh, for any updates on what will be happening with that. Uh, but as far as we know, it's Saturday at six-thirty in the evening, uh, and, uh, I just wanted to make sure, yes, we are aware of that, going on Saturday, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Epperson?
Thank you, no say.
Okay, thank you, now I have a question. Is this my time?
Commissioner comments?
I'd like to ask a question. Is there an ordinance that we have that prevents the, you know, other than the civil disturbance we've been seeing on TV? Is there an ordinance that we have that is violated if, um, the people simply are on the sidewalks expressing an opinion? There's, there's nothing we can do about, that's your freedom of speech.
Correct.
The problem arises when they interfere with the ingress and egress to a business, or to public, um, transition from one location to another, or with the flow of traffic.
Correct.
Okay, so we don't, we, every law that is necessary is previously in place. The unfortunate thing is, on television, we saw a failure to enforce, so...
Well, one thing with this, uh, just to differentiate it from, uh, events, if you will, there is no application in with us for reserving space, area, time, you know, Rosa Trails or anything else. So this is a, a, a group of individuals, whoever they may be, um, that have posted online that they're organizing Saturday evening at six-thirty, um, in the downtown area to, uh, do a peaceful protest with, uh, along with what's been going on past ten days or so.
I, I don't think there's any of us that doesn't protest the outcome for, um, the victim in Minnesota. But we would choose to do it lawfully and in a civil manner, and that's what our police department is for.
Yes, Chief McMinn is, uh, very much aware of it, um, um, from what I understand, they are trying to reach out and, uh, see if there's some, um, organizer with it and all that to ensure, uh, it's, it is peaceful, there's safety provisions in place. But i- it's not organized like a Fourth of July event where we can say, it's here, it's here, it's here?
Right.
Type of thing, so, um, that's why I, I'm advising, keep an eye on, um, the Taft Police Department's Facebook page, um, and to see if there's any updates between now, they did post something a couple of hours ago, uh, letting everybody know they are very aware of the, um, event on Saturday. And then if there's any details between now and then, I would think they would post it as well, to keep everybody updated.
Very good. Okay, that answers my question. Bob, do you have anything?
Oh, I have no questions.
Comments?
None for me either, sir.
Okay, so Fourth of July, our Independence Day celebration is coming regardless.
But in the Franklin Field.
It sounds like we will be one of perhaps two cities in the entire county that have, that will have fireworks.
Yes, we believe Tatchby is still moving forward with theirs.
Right, so they should be able to process our paperwork request relatively quickly. We, we would hope anyhow.
So, um, one, one last question on that, Mark, so no vendors or entertainment?
I believe so, ju, 'cause, uh, I believe it's understood that between now and, uh, July fourth, uh, it's uncertain if, uh, um, that kind of activity would still be in line with some of the phase-two or phase-three opening procedures. Um, but I believe, other than traffic control in that area, just so there isn't, not necessarily this, uh, social distancing, but to literally control the traffic that obviously would come near the launch site, um, you will see probably some roads blocked or redirected to, um, space everybody out, um, parking along Airport Road, Cedar, Ash. People up on Honolulu Hills.
Twenty years ago.
So that's why I use the basic term of tailgating, um, find a spot, um, don't tear up somebody's private property. Uh, but once you get the details from, um, whatever flyer or other information that comes out from the chamber, you'll see the specifics of, uh, what areas they're trying to, uh, restrict access to, both, mostly for the safety of the launch site, 'cause it needs a five-hundred-foot radius, um, and then beyond that, where do people set up, uh, to view the show?
And that's the reason, because we've now approved a project that shortens the, the distance?
True, but they haven't broke ground, so that would've been a, a okay site, but, uh, uh, being that there isn't any, uh, anything else with it, they decided to go out to... But being that there isn't any, anything else with it, they decided to go out to Franklin Field. A side note is I believe the Franklin Field ball fields, all that will be closed. So anybody thinking they're spreading out on the grass and all that, I don't believe that will be accessible. Restrooms are still closed as they are today. So it's going to be more beyond that property and beyond the Franklin Field area where if anybody wanted to set up to watch the show. But look, keep an eye out for those details. That's coming from the chamber. I'll probably know when you know, since there's no application through us.
You'll probably know before I know. Okay, that concludes our comments and questions. Identification of a representative for the next council meeting. Bob, do you want to do that or show Jerry to do it again?
I'll nominate Jerry again.
Okay, Jerry. Moved and seconded.
I volunteer to not go.
Regardless of your desire.
Commissioner Livingston's been your default, but our next meeting still will be closed, so there won't be a planning commission report. We'll figure out, once we have the council meetings back open, if there's some summary you could give of the previous months. So Vice Chair Livingston wants to be the default, if you will.
You could phone it in, Jerry.
And so, but yeah, we're, it's not anticipated. Our next June meeting for the city council will be open for that report, so. Just be ready when we do and we'll have a summary of three, four, or five months of meetings.
Speaking of which, do we know when Corona three or whatever is going to happen from Gavin?
Do not take me as an expert on this, but I believe what it's going to take is, if you've been hearing these variances that the county has been submitting to the state, and I believe all fifty-seven counties are going this route because their case numbers are or are not as severe as maybe other regions of the state. So a blanket reopening doesn't apply everywhere. So that's where some of the restaurants and retail locations have opened up the last two weeks or so. That's because the county has asked for these variances from the state. So our numbers are looking okay. There are some numbers that are not so good, but that's the Health Department and the county making those variance requests, essentially on behalf of everybody to, in this county, to open up sooner than maybe what a broader plan or more restrictive plan would be for other areas. So we're in two. I don't think any portion of our county is in phase three or any portion of the state. There might be one or two counties. But keep an eye on Kern County's information sites and Kern County Public Health. So Mr. Alsop?
You talking about the?
The CAO for the county. He's been the public information person on that. And then Matt Constantine for Kern County Public Health. Their sites have been keeping things updated, both on the COVID data and then how they're proceeding with trying to get different venues and commercial properties reopen that's in a safe manner.
All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, none? Carries on to three oh. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.